Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Please hold your role.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Thank you. First counsel, before we move into our agenda, we have a new officer that is going to be sworn in this evening, and maybe ask Captain Thomas if he wouldn't mind introducing Tyler Rasnam before we do our, say a few words.
Sure, will do. Put you on the spot there.
I was a little concerned you were going to have me swear him in or something. This is our newest officer, this is Officer Tyler Risedam. He is from Fairfield originally, and he just entered the United States Marine Corps last year, and he's now a reserve for the Marine Corps, and he started with us after an extensive background check last week. I didn't put you on the spot, I remembered everything, right? Pronounced your name right?
Tyler, please just face me and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Tyler Risedam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter as required by law.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Congratulations Tyler. The council will move on to our consent agenda. First, I'll ask if there are any changes or additions to this evening's meeting, agenda. If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of meetings from the March 10th and March 12th special council meeting. We have approval of liquor licenses for Hy-Vee, Mike &amp; Nicky's, Everybody's, Whole Foods, and the Hideaway, and claims in the amount of $240,739.15. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve. So moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes, but abstain on the March 12 minutes as I was not present.
Hamilton?
Yes, but I'll also abstain on the March 12 minutes as I was not able to attend that meeting.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes, but abstain from March 10th and March 12th as I wasn't present.
Okay, everyone. Next council will move on to our public appearances, and this evening we're going to take a look at the results of our housing needs assessment, and Adam from FIDA is here this evening and has a presentation for us. Go ahead, Adam.
In case you can't read it, I'll give you guys a copy of the presentation as well. So a little background was, last year, FIDA, the Chamber of Commerce, and the City Commissioned a housing needs assessment. It was conducted by Area 15, which is the regional planning organization, and just a couple of weeks ago, we got the results from that, and kind of doing the tours in the city here and giving some highlights, which is what I'll try to give to you tonight, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions, or as we go along here. So, you can't just look at the housing itself, you've got to look at the demographics because they're intertwined. So, you can see here, but... The housing need assessment starts off by looking at the population, the income, and some of the demographics, and you're probably all familiar with this more than I am, having lived here for a substantial amount of time, but Fairfield's population kind of peaked in the 90s, and it's been slowly declining over the early 2000s, although it's started to grow again very slowly over the last few years. The other big demographic trend is the population is aging. If you look at the state of Iowa, the average age is 38, in Fairfield it's 46, and it's progressively getting older. So that affects some of the needs of residents when they actually look at houses. On the income side, Fairfield's got a substantial portion of people that are struggling. The average household income is $43,919, but you look at the bottom brackets, you've got about 30% of Fairfield residents that are earning less than $20,000 a year. So, I think as you get into the results, that explains some of the conditions of the existing houses, there's some underlying economic struggles going on. Not to be all bad news, there's some pretty good results in here as well. About 4.7% of people in Iowa work from their home. In Fairfield, it's a little over 12%, and I think that's a strong indication of the entrepreneurship in the community, although there's also some residents working from home, probably from Cambridge and some other local industries as well. If you compare our numbers, though, to our equivalents, or what we've used as equivalents in the study at Tamwa, Mount Pleasant, and Oskaloosa, we're substantially higher than all three of those. On the unemployment side, we're above the state of Iowa, but if you look at other southeast Iowa communities, we're substantially below that, at 6.8%. Actually, look at the housing stock, you see we have a very old housing stock, as does most of the state of Iowa. About 50% of our homes were built before 1962, and if you look at 2000 to 2011, you can see it's not necessarily keeping pace with the last century in our construction. So, you know, as Fairfield's population is stabilizing and maybe even growing a little bit, we're not necessarily getting a large amount of new homes, although demographic trends overall is household sizes are smaller, people are getting more square footage per person, so... Again, I'd just say that when you look at that UGing housing stock, that has a couple of ramifications on the community, you're looking at more maintenance issues for the older homes, you have accessibility issues for an older population, these homes are not designed necessarily for wheelchairs or handicap accessibility, and many of them don't meet MSB standards, which a portion of our community would like to see as well. There's a few other community impacts that I'll just hit on before we go into the actual windshield survey. You know, I think if you look at the demographics, it's indicative of some economic distress for a portion of our community. You know, it's a little bit in contrast when you actually look at the quality of some of the houses of the vibrant community that I think we often are able to display through a lot of our community features, and when businesses are trying to attract young talent, as you'll see in some of the employer results, it's difficult to do that when there's not a lot of quality housing options out there. So one thing that Area 15 did in this, in the study, was actually drove through and visually evaluated each single-family home in Fairfield. They gave them a ranking of 1 through 5, excellent down to dilapidated, and although this isn't scientific in any means, it should give you a little bit of an idea of what we're looking at from a housing stock perspective. They found about, just under 900 homes were in poor, dilapidated status, about 32 of which they considered dilapidated, which probably means uninhabitable from their perspective. And when you actually lay that out on map, black are the ones that they've considered dilapidated, yellow and poor, green is good, and blue is in excellent condition. You can see that there's swaths of the northeast, or sorry, northwest portion of town that if you drive through, you'd probably agree, there's some need of, some tender love and care. And again, this doesn't include the multifamily or many of the trailers in the city as well, they just evaluated single-family homes. Looking at the actual housing market, see we've been averaging 160, 190 homes sold per year, mean price varying between $85,000 and $100,000 in the last few years. Looking at a little of the owner occupied statuses, we have a larger rental population than some of our peer communities, and a higher percentage of homes in the $50,000 to $100,000 range. The study also included three surveys. It surveyed banks to get a feel for what they were seeing in the community, it surveyed employers, and it surveyed real estate agents in town. I think the employer survey and the real estate agent survey are particularly interesting, and you'll see this pop up again later, but realtors, or employers observed that 35% of their workforce lives in Fairfield, which means the majority of people working in Fairfield jobs, majority of people working in Fairfield do not live in Fairfield. You can see a number of the other communities that they live in on a percentage scale based off of the employer survey. If you look at the actual census data, you'll see a little bit different picture, but they both kind of conclude that you've got a lot of people living outside the community and working here. The reasons employers stated that people were choosing to live other than Fairfield, A, family reasons, if you're historically, if you've got family in Tamwa, they tend to continue to live there, they had a previous job in another city, they tend to commute. The big one I think that we can actually change is desirable housing in Fairfield is unavailable, and then there's also a lot of people stating that the cost of living in Fairfield is unaffordable, although that's not particularly supported when you actually look at the rental prices and the property prices compared to Mount Pleasant or Tamwa. The realtors also responded with reasons that people are choosing not to purchase or rent a home in Fairfield as a lack of affordable housing, the lack of style or type or quality of housing, and again, the lack of quality of affordable rental properties in town. A few recommendations that they gave us were new single-family and condominium constructions needed, there hasn't been a lot of construction in town the last three years, looking at the permits, it's single digits, and again, that's just in Fairfield, not Jefferson County as a whole. They suggest having more rental properties, two bedrooms and three bedrooms in specific. There's a number of incentives that I'll talk about briefly here in a minute that can be used to spur that new construction, and again, they just want to see newer subdivisions go up, and some enforcement of existing maintenance standards in town. So, backing, tracking a little bit here, but if you look at the commuter patterns, the big circle you see here, and this is census data as opposed to employer data, you've got the majority of people living outside of Fairfield, working in Fairfield, the interior circle here is people living and working in Fairfield, and then on the far right, you have people that are living in Fairfield and working elsewhere. I just think that's, it's a good indication of a need for housing in the community, is that you've got a lot of people working here, but not living in Fairfield. So, the study makes a few recommendations on what the city can do to improve the existing housing stock, and what we can do to encourage new housing stock. Again, code enforcement is something they look at, partnering with local nonprofits for infill developments, Habitat for Humanity's done a number of projects in town, and FIDA offers some low-interest or no-interest loan programs for people that need to do home repairs, and then pursuing and encouraging external funding resources, CDBG grants, we've, I believe, won one previously that restored or repaired, I think, nine or 10 houses. There are some demolition programs for these dilapidated houses that you can utilize, get up to $50,000 to demolish a house and then do a replacement, low to medium income housing in its place. Urban revitalization tax exemption program, ahead is the FIDA program that provides people low to no-interest loans to do home repairs. Jefferson County Energy Rewards program is another FIDA-administered program that lets people put in new furnaces or insulation, and then because Jefferson County has a high poverty rate, we also qualify for the Enterprise Zone program, which allows developers to construct a number of single-family or multifamily homes and receive property tax incentives and sales tax rebate, or a sales tax abatement. On the additional housing, developing new housing in the community, their recommendations are that they target the senior population, look at multifamily, and look at MSB standard homes, particular need in the senior family, or senior citizen level for accessibility standards. Again, LMI housing and middle income, they see a particular need for that sort of housing, and then as you see demolition of dilapidated structures, there'll be a need for infill housing, and then just general new subdivisions as well. Again, the incentives that they list is being able to drive this sort of development is tax increment financing, which the city's had mixed results previously, but it's probably something to take a look at and figure out a comprehensive plan for a housing strategy, and how you might be able to use TIF to encourage that. If you use TIF, you'll also be looking to create a housing trust fund. If you're doing market rate housing in a TIF district, then you need to set aside a certain portion of funds to help facilitate low to medium income housing, and then again, utilizing the Enterprise Zone, which there's been a lot of interest in the last couple of months since I've shown up in the program, and it is scheduled to change depending on what the state legislative body does here, but the program itself will remain intact, it just might change a little bit in terms of how it's structured. And then back to what I was saying, having a comprehensive housing strategy, as we're going into the strategic planning phase for the city, that's something to be addressed as well. So, those are kind of the highlights of the study, and if you've got any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Thanks, Adam. Let's see, ask, what is it that jumps out at you as far as, you know, we understood that doing this document was going to give us a little bit of detail to support what it is that we already know about the condition of our housing, and about the lack of adequate housing and opportunities in those different areas, and to use that as a way to spur interest in development. What, in your opinion, is next step?
Well, again, I've only been in the community for about two months, so I'm still sort of learning as I go here. I guess through conversations I've had, I think there is a lot of interest for new housing development to take place, and I'd say one thing to consider would be how to responsibly use TIF to put in the infrastructure that developers would need in town. You know, we're not as lucky as larger cities where you've got large-scale developers that can come in, lay that infrastructure, and then sell the homes for big profits. You know, it's a tight housing market here in town, but you're never going to see real estate prices jump sky-high enough that you can afford to lay $2 million worth of road, sewer, and water down and still turn a nice profit. So, it probably makes sense to figure out a comprehensive strategy for the city to use TIF responsibly, and to encourage that development, and maybe an incremental pattern of soliciting people that have an interest in building a home in a subdivision, getting a tentative commitment from them, and then looking to the city to say, we can afford to put in a certain amount of infrastructure based off of those commitments, and then after having that discussion, coming back and getting solid commitments to build homes within a certain timeframe. That way you can guarantee you're going to have the TIF revenue that you need to pay for those infrastructure costs as you would bond out. And again, then on the existing housing stock, you know, there's just a need to evaluate some of those programs that are out there to both rehab and repair, and to demolish some of the homes that can't be saved at this point. So, definitely further investigations needed, and the Housing Committee that was put together last year's done a great job, and they might be somebody to look forward to actually get a plan, a plan going forward, as this document provides a lot of information, but not a lot of solutions, I would say.
Personally, I'd like to see what some of the people who could potentially be in the market would say about what it is that holds them back also. I know we had some general comments from some of the employers, and I'd probably discount those a little bit because that almost sounds like complaining, but if you are, you know, if you're really active in pursuing something in the housing market, what have you done? What have you not found? What would you do differently if you had it? And, you know, we don't, for instance, you and I have spoken about this, we really don't have spec home developers in our community, and if we were to attract people who would take that kind of risk and begin a development process, would people respond to that? Would the market respond to something like that? And so I wonder if there could almost be a follow-up call, a survey out to people who have looked at the Fairfield market, and what, if there's anything more we can learn in depth about how we can position this. Counsel, any other questions for Adam? So, has FIDA, the FIDA board had a full presentation on this yet, or the chamber?
Yes, we did do a chamber presentation business before brunch and Quanis Club, and be kind of making the rounds here in the next couple of weeks with everybody else as well.
Okay, so it might be good to convene the chamber, FIDA, and the city again to kind of follow up and begin that process, and see where it takes us as far as what was recommended at the very end, doing a, was it a comprehensive plan, or not a comprehensive plan, but a...
That was more of an opinion on my part, as the city goes into doing the comprehensive planning.
Right.
To address housing as part of that.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. I would entertain a motion then, counsel, to accept the housing study as it was prepared by Area 15, regional planning.
Moved to accept.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, we have presentation by the Crisis Intervention Services, and we will be signing a proclamation declaring Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah. I'm with Crisis Intervention Services in Oskaloosa. Currently, we're providing sexual assault and shelter services to victims in this area. We are new to the community. As of last summer, the state divided the domestic violence and sexual assault programs into six different regions. With this change, we took over the sexual assault and shelter services from the Atoma Crisis Center. Currently, we are working on putting our name out there, raising awareness in the new communities that we're serving. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so we are just here today to ask that you sign a proclamation declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Fairfield. Do you guys have any questions or anything for me?
Sarah, yeah, we really appreciate the work that you do. We know, I'm sure our police force appreciates the work that you do as well, and we have done this on an annual basis in support of this, so we, again, appreciate your work, appreciate you coming over today. So I'll go ahead and sign this proclamation that we've had prepared. Counsel, entertain a motion then to approve the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Hammers, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, counsel, we get to look a little forward into the summer season, now that we're beyond spring and it's still snowing, we have a presentation by representatives from Fair Fest, our local music festival that was begun last year.
Thank you very much. I'm James Moore. This is Erica Richards, and we just wanted to share a few of...
Could you bring your microphone up a little bit? There we go.
Radio guy. Anyway, just quickly give a recap from last year, what we're adding this year. Basically, tonight's ask is simply to expand in the area of a beer tent, but I wanted to just do a quick recap by saying, following on last year's success, we estimated about 6,000 to 8,000 people over four days attended. We're hoping to double those numbers this year, in addition to renting the entire convention center Friday through Sunday, we're not going to do Thursday night this time, again with the four-story main stage that was in front of the convention center. Also, events will be taking place inside the Sondheim, and we'd like to add a third stage, if not working with Fairfield Farmers Market as well, but on the town square for Saturday and Sunday, noon to 4:00, working in conjunction with KMCD and some others, to have a noon to 4:00 stage, and then the main stage starting in the 4:00 or 5:00 timeframe. So, that's one thing, we just want to get a little more traffic down Vender Row. Also, this year, we're upping the ante with some world-class Grammy Award-winning musical acts like Los Lobos of La Bamba fame, you may remember. New Orleans stellar Mardi Gras favorites Rebirth Brass Band, also Grammy Award winners, plus Grammy-nominated David Lindley, who's the slide guitarist for Jackson Brown, as well as Minneapolis's nine-piece Cuban salsa band, Choranga Tropical, a fresh up-and-coming group from Nashville called Modoc, also regional favorites like Pieta Brown, The Mumfords from Ames, Christopher The Concord from Des Moines, and local favorites like Bamboo, who happen to have their 20th anniversary this year. And we're kind of calling this Anniversary Edition because, of course, it's 175th year for Fairfield, it's the 40th anniversary for Los Lobos, 30th anniversary for Iowa Source, 20th anniversary for Bamboo, the 30th anniversary of MSAE's first graduating class, they're going to be coming back that weekend to celebrate, there's an MIU reunion that's 20th year, we also have just a lot of fun with people showing up that way, so we're kind of delighted. Trouble Lights will be performing, Steve McClane and the Jefferson County Green Band, and many, many others. Last year, there were about 50 bands over 40, excuse me, over four nights in three days, it'll be closer to the 30, 35, 40-band range this time. So see, we're learning our limits. As we did last year, we'll have some great sustainable keynote speakers. Last year, someone came from the Board of Greenpeace, the founder of the American Sustainable Business Council. This year, we have some other great keynote speakers, they'll be featured, Sondheim Center. Other new features, a literary crawl in conjunction with First World Publishing and Writers Voices, that's Monica Hadley, a children's corner, and that will also be a children's story component in conjunction with our solar-powered public library and Cheryl Fusco-Johnson. We'll be coordinating camping for out-of-towners, that's something we were not able to get to last year, and we've been talking with some people about that, to do that in the proper way. We have a great new volunteer who's working on a zero-waste system for vendors and concert goers, whether we get that to the full extent this year, but in the direction of using materials that are, we're able to compost and so forth, so we'll have more attention to that. And we'll continue to partner with great folks like American, and I'm really excited this year to be working with KMCD, to have the commercial and the non-commercial stations joining forces to create a singular sort of signature event for Fairfield is really exciting, but also the Iowa Source, Weekly Reader, and others like Jean Greco, Tammy Jones, who has, and I think no stranger to everybody here, has accepted our offer to, if you deem to have a variance for the beer tent, from her great experience with RagBri and others, to help us facilitate that with her crew. So, that, Southeast Iowa Blues Society, SPI Entertainment, Everybody's, many, many others, working with us. We had a great response from the motels last year. Also, the team that pulled this together, it was quite, quite something to watch, and again, RagBri, other events where we see people show up and make something happen. Doing this for the first time was a big bite to chew, and I just remember one of the civic fathers saying, you know, people have been talking about doing an event like this for Fairfield, something that's sort of along the lines of the Free Festival that Iowa City has, a great tradition, that's been talked about for a long time here, and somehow, a volunteer organization with some community lovers put this together, and it was quite remarkable to see. Fairfield is a fertile, entrepreneurial, dreamful place, and I think putting those elements together with the musicality and whatnot, we're very delighted. So, to keep things short here, I also want to say, we appreciate the support last year from the city and others, helping with a number of functions. We have spoken with Police Chief Harvey about the street closures and all that. Just so you know, we'll be going to the Public Safety Meeting Wednesday and looking at those details, so tonight is an ask about the idea of expanding this major event with something I think people kind of expect, or I think makes sense to do with this, and that is a beer garden, and so that's basically what we're asking tonight. The other details, we can do more of, but I just wanted to at least say, to give you a perspective of what Fair Fest is, we had a three-to-five-year plan, and we feel pretty good about it.
Can you give the dates?
The dates will be June 20th to 20... The dates will be June 20th to 22nd this year.
Thanks, James. From the map that we received, I'm not sure I see where the beer garden is.
East of Main Street, just there in front of, on Briggs.
Briggs, right in front of the courthouse on the southwest corner.
Okay, got it. And did we not have one last year that was just, okay, I thought there was one just outside the, on the Civic Center property, actually.
No, I don't think they came outside. People were drinking beer from inside, I think, but had to stay in there, so.
Okay. And has Chief Harvey reviewed this as well, and that comes with her recommendation?
Congratulations.
Okay, very good.
I had a call from City Hall last week wanting a public safety meeting, and one of the items on the meeting they wanted was to discuss the beer tent. And I understood from then that Chief Harvey had some concerns on fencing and that kind of things, so I thought we should discuss this first, our public safety meeting on Wednesday before we approve it tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I think if it hasn't, that would probably be appropriate along with the others, and if it sounds like there's going to be something in Central Park, so that could all come together as a package at our next meeting.
Sure.
For approval. Okay, but counsel, does that sound reasonable then?
I think so.
Yeah, I think we've got a lot of, very exciting things to discuss, no question about it, and this is all in the spirit of being prepared for, you know, a very large event. We really thank you for your efforts and really look forward to it. So we'll look forward to what comes out of the public safety meeting, and then at our April 14th meeting, we'll come together and approve the whole package.
Thanks, and I can say less than.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's, we'll move on. It is also prom season, so we have someone representing Fairfield High School regarding the parade for prom.
Hi.
Hi.
We would like to request, as usual, that we be able to block off the street in front of the Civic Center for approximately two hours during our prom parade, which will be April 12th at 8:00.
Okay, very good. And then the period of time that you will need it blocked off, two hours prior to the prom?
Yes, and then possibly an hour or two afterwards, because we do have bleachers that we provide for the audience.
Sure. That will not be a problem, and believe it'll not be snowing by April 12th.
Let's hope not. We've had that happen, and also a tornado one year when we had to go to the basement of the Civic Center, so.
Counselor, I'd entertain approval for the request for the street closing to support the Fairfield High School Parade Prom.
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next, counsel, we have, we will have before us at our next meeting, April 14th, a request to rezone 200 East Briggs from B1 to R3. We don't really have any information on that right now, we're just looking to set a public hearing for April 14th, so I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. By Hallie, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then also, for the same evening, we'll set a public hearing for plans and specifications, the form of contract for the skate park. I'm going to ask Derek, Derek, you're here, would you come up and tell us where we are with that? I was surprised to see that we were that far along. Give us an idea.
Back, another rec capital project. Back in November, we had a nominist donor approach me about wanting to donate money towards a skate park. Since then, we've had meetings with the donor, our city administrator, our city clerk, and French renter, putting together kind of the wishes of the donor a little bit. And as I understand, we, the donor is starting to pull funds out of an account of his, so he's moving his process, we're kind of moving our process. We're planning to locate the skate park just west of the proposed gymnasium that we're working on. The topography of the land kind of fits how we're going to do the skate park. It's going to be a bowl, it won't be an above-ground skate park. Kids can skate down into the, into the bowl, I guess, and it'd be a skate-at-your-own-risk kind of park, so. Do you have any questions?
What's the amount of the donation?
$150,000.
It was up to $150,000.
Up to, yes. And you expect the construction to be 111?
Along with that was planning to put a shelter and see if we can do other things with those funds, I think.
So will there be any money from the city, or will it all be donation?
It'll be donation.
Okay.
Also labor.
Labor.
From city employees?
Yes.
Okay.
The, on the layout that's attached, the proposed parking lot would be city labor, but as far as any grading related to the skate park would be part of the skate park contract.
I didn't see a layout, I just saw a letter.
Um, the action item has the letter and then...
Oh, the plans.
The plans. There's a layout.
Melanie, how do you feel at this point, now that the plans for what's actually developed on the site with the, with the proposed recreation center, a little bit in flux? Are we going to construct this ahead of that, obviously, and do you feel where you've located it, that that will not be an impediment to the development out there?
If only the rec center building is built west, that there's no additional building, if the gymnastics building is not located there, the skate park will fit fine on that site. We're sticking with pretty much the existing topography, so it will work well for the plans of the gym.
Okay, and I know I've met with the donor also, along with Derek, when we were first conceiving the skate park, and I don't, I think his intention is basically to develop one. Where it's developed is more on us, so we're certain that this is still the best place.
Yeah, he kind of felt that Howard Park, where the current skate park was kind of out of the way a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Heritage Park.
Heritage Park, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's my understanding that the topography, that this is quite a bit lower grade than where the indoor gym would go, right? So I don't think they conflict.
Will it be lit? Is that, has lighting been discussed?
Lighting is not part of the budget that we've discussed. The thought was when the rec center gets built, that outdoor lighting would be needed with the rec center and that the skate park would get lit at that time.
Okay. Michael, make sure that's in your budget. Better be in somebody's, or it won't be lit. All right, thanks. Any other questions? We'll hear more about the project at our next meeting, so we'll go ahead and set our public hearing for April 14th. Thanks, Melanie.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Hallie, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we'll have a report on our community compost site and an action item. Michael?
Yeah, this is one of the items we discussed at our last Environment Franchise Utility Committee meeting. We had the community compost site open up last year, but we never formalized the policy. We had a local arborist contractor who wanted to use the site to bring material. Our Public Works Director, Daryl Bisgard, clearly posted on a sign, "No contractors." So the contractor wanted to meet with committee and discuss the pros and cons of which direction were we to go. While the argument that a contractor can bring citizens' materials out there, and that being within the right of the citizen, holds true, the problem is, if you allow a small contractor and then you start allowing any contractors, it could get overrun with material really quickly. We grind it as needed, and that costs several thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, so committee decided that it's simplest at this point to leave it as no contractors allowed at this point. Doug wanted to revisit it in a year. If we're not getting, if we're not getting as much material as we thought, maybe we can then try to a trial year where we do allow them. But for this one, committee is recommending to council, no contractors. I'll read all the compost sites rules. The site will be open 24/7. The site can be closed for any reason by the Public Works Director or his designee. The dump site is available for residential use only. The dump site is for leaves, garden waste, and brush only. No contractors allowed to dump at the site. Mulch will be available to anybody for free, and help will be available to load it if an appointment is made ahead of time by calling 472-4750. The city is not responsible for accidents that happen while at the site. So far, we've had very little problems with it. Somebody did bring railroad ties once last spring. We quickly took a picture of Daryl struggling with them, posted that in the paper. I think that people's hearts went out. He looked like he was sweating his brow, moving those things, so that stopped. So far, so good, and if people want the mulch, which is actually better quality, it's ground smaller than it used to with this new tub grinder service we're using, we'll help you load it for free. So that's pretty good service. And the two times a year, spring and fall, curb-side brush pickup will continue because Daryl and his crew apparently like doing it for some reason. So if you've got material, you've got a job done, you can hang on to it and then put it by the curb at the appropriate time for free pickup. So I'll make a motion to...
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Is grass allowed out there?
Yes.
It's not on the list.
It's not. It should be. Can we amend this slightly and add grass?
Clippings, yeah.
Yeah.
I assume that was garden waste, but...
I have one question too. Did you consider charging contractors to dump?
No, the problem is, it's not managed, it's just...
It's not monitored at all.
Yeah, it's just a open site.
And when, I'll just make one comment. The, last week, last Friday, we did have a small fire out there.
Oh, really?
So, wasn't a big fire, but anyhow, the less people we get out there, sometimes, I don't know what happened, you know, I wouldn't think it'd be combustion right now, this present time, but it could have been somebody that lit something up. I don't know, but Scott was on top of it, he called me, and they got it taken care of, but that is something that can happen.
Yeah, and it'll only be open 24/7 as long as people don't abuse it. So I'll make a motion to adopt this formal policy with the amendment that grass clippings be added to the list of appropriate materials.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hammers. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, we have the third reading of our tree planting amendment. This will be the final reading, so we are, this will be a public hearing. I'll ask if, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to address the
Good evening, Mayor Malloy, Fairfield City Council. I am Joe Ledger, and I'm here representing the Farm Bureau. Our non-farmer members in Fairfield reached out to the County Farm Bureau, asking for help, feeling our property rights were being targeted. Farm Bureau is a strong supporter of local rights, and that is the main reason for getting involved. Farm Bureau supports and works to protect property rights. In this case, we believe that property rights need to be protected. We would encourage anyone looking at using any kind of insecticide to get informed and follow the directions. Farm Bureau believes that the residents of Fairfield are responsible, and instead of legislating, an educational approach with outreach may be more effective. Farm Bureau supports water quality initiatives and believes in a volunteer approach through education. Farm Bureau supports property rights. Farm Bureau thanks the council for exempting agriculture and logging from the initial proposal, but the request to look into the ordinance came from our non-farm members. Any questions?
Thanks. Joe, anything specific about the language of the ordinance, the way it reads now that people are unhappy with?
You're going to do some changing tonight, add some amendments or something? Am I correct in saying that?
I think it looks like there are some in here, so why don't we, why don't we get that report first, and then I'll add, you can come back up and address that if there's, if there's something more specific, so we can get this ironed out. Michael, do you have, are there, do you want to talk about?
Sure.
What's being added since your last meeting?
Well, the things that were being added since the first are just adding shrubs back into the language. This version that you have on your tablets is called a red-line version, so in red are the changes. So you see the shrubs and hedges, return of the shrubs are put back in for most of it. I think the issue the Farm Bureau had was with the ban on soil drench and granular insecticides. I spoke to two people last week, Dr. Gretchen Pollock from the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, responsible for pesticide maintenance, she's with the Pesticide Bureau. I was curious about this law, that the state code that prohibits local governments from regulating insecticide use. We talked for a bit, she didn't have all the answers I wanted, she did have some information, but she passed me along to Mark Shower, he's with the Iowa State University. His job is essentially researching and then advising state legislator on proper pesticide use. And he's currently traveling around the state, giving public presentations, he works with the Department of Natural Resources and IDALS, to educate people about, especially with EAB, topical insecticides. I found in an article that was written just a few days ago, that he said if too much of the chemical, being the soil drench and the granular topical insecticides, if too much is used, it can get into the water supply, and if there are flowers near the tree that they're treating, it can spread into pollinators. So those are the reasons that I was working with the Department of Natural Resources and coming up with the language on this soil drench ban, simply because between a drench application and an injection, the drench has the potential, as the experts say, to get into the water supply and to kill pollinators. Now, any farmer can tell you they need pollinators. We don't want to see pollinator die off so bad, like in China where they have human beings pollinating plants now. So in terms of larger protection, it is our right, in one sense, under home rule law, to have more strict laws than the state or the federal government. You can't do the opposite, you can't have more lenient laws, but you can have more strict laws. The bottom line is, if we wanted to spend the money and have our county attorney write a very tight ordinance, we could ban these insecticides in town. Instead, the amendments that our attorney, city attorney, added references the state law, limits the use or the ban to commercial application as defined by the state code, Iowa Code Chapter 206.2. Also, leaves agriculture, horticulture, silviculture exempt from the ordinance. And then lastly, and this is the last line that was added for this reading, that all this applies and regulates the city of Fairfield property governed and within the scope of municipal home rule ordinance. That's the, that's the one part of it where if we wanted to, we could push this and not have those exemptions, but in the, in the spirit of not telling people what to do on their property, but at the same time, protecting our water supply and protecting our environment, we're going to go ahead and go along with the state code as it's written, which is only banning commercial application. The flip side of this is that it's not commercial applicators who are really the concern. Most of them are somewhat familiar with these products and know how much to apply with the, with the over-the-counter products. They state clearly on the label how much can be used in a certain area, but it's very easy to overdo it if I have a yard with a lot of ash trees. So the education aspect is that we will invite Mark Shower to town. He told me he's willing to come down and educate the public. We can add... We can have Fairfield Mini Center film it, probably host it at the library, and have our local media cover it and really get the word out, just to educate as much as possible that if people do want to go this route, and it is their right to do so, just to please follow the label. And we don't have enforcement officers, but there is a phone number that if someone feels like a neighbor potentially used too much and broke the law, they can call. And I know a gentleman in Des Moines did get fined for doing too much. He dumped too much in too small an area. So just again, ask people to caution, err on the side of caution. Now, there are some mini tree service companies in town who are more than willing to do injections. So there's another option for people. So that's basically, I've just read everything that was in there. So...
Essentially, your amendments narrow this down to trees?
It narrows it down to commercial, exempting or banning commercial application of soil drench, granular, or other topical insecticides on trees.
On trees.
Yeah. And that's all it was ever for. And again, it's a temporary...
Right, but I think the community perception was that it was much broader. So I just want to make that clarifying point, that it's just on trees. And we would anticipate that anybody desiring to use this this time would be to address the ashbore situation. So that's why...
Well, it's only those... And list only the products that are for EAB.
I see that.
And again, you know, once this issue is, once the ashbore comes and does its damage and moves on, this can all be removed. This is temporary language.
But Joe, let me just ask you then, with the amendments that basically exempt agriculture, horticulture, nursery, all those different areas and just target it to trees, is that something that would address the concerns that you had heard?
What you have said, I am happy with, but I can't speak for the members. I was just here representing Farm Bureau tonight. And I had talked to Kevin a couple, three weeks ago because I was concerned about agriculture.
Right. Well, you can help us also by letting Farm Bureau know so that if they feel more of those questions, that we are just really trying to target this on the impending ashbore situation and really just dealing with trees at this point. The amendment should protect that.
So is this going to be the final draft tonight, you think?
It is.
Can you postpone it two weeks so people have a chance to look at the final draft? So if there's any other questions, postpone voting on it?
Council desires to do that. We could, yeah.
I would appreciate that, then. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I was hoping to get this passed into law before the spring thaw. It's snowing.
Two weeks, no worries.
Well, it's three weeks. It's a three-week ordinance meeting.
I think the secret is education.
Yeah, I agree. Education's definitely an important component.
Yeah. There are going to be a lot, the law may be in place, but I think there's not going to be a lot of people reading the ordinance. I think the education is going to be an important component of it. Any other comments before we close the public hearing? We declare the public hearing closed. Council, any responses?
Table Ordinance 1117 until April 14th meeting.
Second that motion.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy and second by Hamis. Discussion, Michael?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamis?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, then we'll move to our second reading of Ordinance 1118, which is new utility account procedures. Declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to address the council? That will declare the public hearing closed. And council, have you received any feedback on the designated changes? If not, entertain a motion to pass from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. Council, our city attorney couldn't be here this evening, John Morrissey, but he did leave a copy of what is being prepared as a document that would be circulated to potential buyers of our Logan apartment property. So we wanted to just have you review that, and we would look to approve that on April 14th so that we can begin circulating this. As you know, the sale is part of our budget for the coming fiscal year, so the sooner we move on this, the better. But I know this is the first opportunity people have gotten a chance to look at it. So if we would read this over the next few weeks, if you have any amendments, I would direct them directly to John Morrissey. That's all I had. We'll move on to our committee reports. Personnel Committee, Doug?
Yes. Personnel Committee met on March 13th to review input from stakeholders on their perceptions of the city administrator's job performance. We received input from council members, department heads, and significant outside stakeholders. The results we received were mixed. We had about 60% of the responses were below acceptable, 40% acceptable or above. The committee discussed it for about one hour, and we examined the big picture, looking at leadership, morale, teamwork, quality of relationships, images that he presents to the citizens and the community at large, and his ability to move the city forward in a productive manner. Considered two options, probation and nonrenewal contract. And after further discussion, the committee voted to recommend nonrenewal contract.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. And I know that's a report on your committee. We had hoped to have a further discussion tonight. Kevin and his family did have vacation plans for spring break, so I believe this will come up for our April 14th meeting as well. Any questions for Doug on his report?
When does that contract expire?
June 28.
Okay. Any other questions?
I can wait till April 14th for those.
What's that?
I can wait till April 14th if any questions.
Sure. Property Committee, is there a report, please?
Martha, she's out of town.
Okay. Environmental Franchise Utilities Committee?
All right, we already discussed the compost policy. The only other thing is that as part of the city's blue zone responsibilities, we're supposed to get a community garden project going. And I was a little worried about that, to be honest. Many have started, few have lasted. But I found a couple of young upstarts who feel that they've developed a model that actually will last. And basically, I'm facilitating getting them to work with some local property owners. And there might be two projects along Grime Street, one at the old St. Mary's building, and then one further down by Howard Park. I know they're meeting Wednesday to discuss it further. So should get us the points we need towards our blue zone designation and these two really great community garden projects. I'll tell you more about them as they unfold.
Great. Thanks, Michael. And since you mentioned that also, I know in our January meeting, if other committees have responsibilities for blue zones, we're years moving quickly, and we'd like to get that done by August. So anything that you can do to move any of those areas forward, we would appreciate. Water Sewer Utilities Committee?
We met at 6:00 prior to this meeting, this evening, and we had on our agenda four properties who were asking for assistance with utility bills that were a result of either broken pipes, meters, or other conveyance of water into homes. We had three properties, one at 1,000 North 8th Street, one at 501 North 8th Street, one at 305 West Stone, that the committee agreed to forgive the sewer portion only of the overage utility bill. And the portion that is forgiven when this is done is the average bill has been established for the property. They would pay that average portion that they would normally pay, and anything above and beyond that that was involved with the problem with water discharging from their system would be forgiven. Carl Chandler is going to work with the gals at the front office, and they'll come up with a formula for each one of those three properties to forgive that portion of the sewer bill back to those property owners. We also had a property at 503 South Main Street. This is a house that has been under renovation for the last year or so. They've only had the property for a short amount of time. And there was one particular portion of the new piping in the house that was overlooked when they did put in new water lines. And that portion broke during a small time away from the home and some severe cold that we had through this last year. And it was agreed by the committee to forgive one-half of that sewer bill. So again, the average bill will be figured. The property owner will be charged what that average bill is. Anything overage for the sewer, then only a half of that portion will be forgiven in that case. And we would like to recommend to the council that you accept that. And Carl will have numbers for us later this week if any of the council members have any questions about how much money that actually involves. It is really not a large amount, so...
Can I...
It would be credited back to their account, those that have already paid the bill. In all but one case here, the persons have paid the entire bill, and they were coming in after to ask for this.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. So you make a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any concern that we don't know the financial amount at this time? Just go forward with that?
It's got to be under $200, doesn't it?
That's right. Okay. All right.
No. There's one that is not. The entire bill on the one property, which was 1,000 North 8th Street, the full amount of the bill was $2,746.61. And of that, again, the average monthly billing there was between $135 and $150. There was a break, and the water was observed going out on the ground. It wasn't going into the sanitary sewer system. And again, the ladies in the front office here will figure on the average bills of $135 to $150, what is agreeable. And then above that, then only the sewer portion would be forgiven.
They're still paying for the water.
They're still...
One half of the sewer portion.
No.
On this one, it would be all of the sewer portion. Another one was $338.68. Another was $439.22. And another one was $88.13.
All right. Thank you for reviewing those. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. And as I did mention, the Logan apartment proposal, that being the last item on our agenda, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Meeting adjourned.